Now that all the council members are present, I call to order the September 21st meeting of the City of West Sacramento, City Council, Redevelopment Accessory Agency, and Finance Authority. Councilmember LaDesma is absent today, and we will begin with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we live, work, learn, and commune is the original homelands of the indigenous peoples of West Sacramento, who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. We acknowledge and we thank the original habitats who have occupied, maintained, and secured this place, and who still exist on this land. We respect and celebrate the many diverse indigenous peoples still connected to this land on which we gather. The council did not meet in closed session this evening, and we would like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which will be led by Mr. Chung Park, the business representative for stationary local 39. And Mr. Chung represents 96 employees here in the city and about 1,000 regionally. Mr. Chung, would you please come to the podium and lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, what an honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Park. That brings us to Part One, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council. As is noted on our agenda, we are prohibited by state law from discussing or taking any action on items that are brought up under Item One, but it provides an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening, to please fill out a request-to-speak card and return it to the clerk. We also recommend this for our consent agenda. At this time, we request that you obtain that request-to-speak card and submit it to the clerk now. And in front of the clerk, there is a timer to ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard. We ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also, in front of the clerk is an analog flip chart which indicates which addenda item the council is currently considering. Tonight, we have a consent agenda, so they'll probably not be included. For items on the regular timed or workshop agenda, we accept the request-to-speak cards up to the conclusion of the reading of the staff report on any particular agenda item. And tonight, we do not have any items other than the consent agenda. Once the staff report has been read, and council questions and public testimony have begun, we do not accept any further speaking requests on that particular agenda item. If you are addressing a specific agenda item, please turn in your cards as soon as possible, but definitely before the conclusion of the staff report for that particular item. We also recognize that for some, speaking in public can cause anxiety, so we request that there be no applause or boos, cat calls, or other demonstrations. Furthermore, so that we may maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers, we ask that those in attendance and those who address the city council abide by the code of conduct posted by the request-to-speak cards and on the podium, and not speak in loud, threatening, offensive, abusive, or other disrespectful language that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. Next is our public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Our first speaker is Mike Sanchez.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Mike Sanchez, and I'm representing the Duran and Sanchez family. My family home of nearly 80 years is located at 213 Third Street in the Broderick neighborhood of West Sacramento and is set to be demolished for the new I Street Bridge project. Our home is a beautiful and well-maintained Victorian dating back to 1888. For decades, my family members who have lived under that roof have contributed to what the West Sacramento region as public servants, law enforcement, educators, community leaders, and veterans. My uncle Louis Marquez was an educator and principal Washington Unified School District. My grandparents, Richard and Molly, were neighborhood pillars and model citizens. They were among the original founders of the Holy Cross Parish and contributed support when the neighborhood officially incorporated into the city of West Sacramento. My grandfather served in World War II and Korea, and more recently, I served six years in the United States Marine Corps. I am the fourth generation of my family to occupy the house. My fiance and I intend to make 213 Third our home and raise our family with the same honest and hard-working values instilled in us. In a recent conversation, a neighbor showed us a plan posted on the Sacramento City website to remove our house as part of the new I Street Bridge replacement project. You have an image of it if it was distributed to you. Based on the published plans, it appears that our family home is to be removed, and in order to clear space for a connecting alleyway that would connect Second Street to Third Street, not the bridge structure itself. We are being asked to sacrifice our home for the sake of an access alleyway to what are essentially vacant lots and abandoned homes on Second Street. I find it difficult to comprehend this seemingly backwards plan that has alternate available alternates. It would be very easy to create the same passageway nearby on nearby B Street, which currently almost connects to Second Street. We spoke to your staff and staff from both cities, and it looks like there's a lot where you can directly help. After speaking with very knowledgeable members of your staff, we learned the bridge plan is at 65%. We also learned the plan, this alley to nowhere through our family home is not the preferred plan of your staff, for reasons ranging from poor building design to traffic safety concerns and misspent money that could disproportionately affect the city of West Sacramento. We also learned that the plan to make this alley largely sits with Sacramento, the Sacramento Bridge Project Management and Design Company. Their forceful approach and this costly and unpopular plan were described as typical cavalier Sacramento behavior. I'm here to ask a few things tonight. First, I'm asking this item be placed on a future agenda, so we could discuss this openly with your stakeholders. You're going to hear from a lot of people tonight that are on my side, that are here to defend our home and our neighborhood of Broderick. Second, I invite you to my home. I invite you to come here, our history, and walk my block. Lastly, I encourage you guys to sit down, to not erase our home. We're one of the oldest families and one of the oldest homes in Sacramento. You might hear tonight, and you might see evidence that we are one of the oldest homes. So it's my hope that you guys visit my home, put this on a future agenda item, and save our home. Thank you again. My name is Mike Sanchez. I look forward to working with you. You will see me every Wednesday.
Annette Duran Sanchez?
My name is Annette Duran Sanchez, and my son, Michael, he just spoke to you about our 80-year-old family history at 213 Third Street. Myself and my siblings grew up in the home. My parents, Richard and Molly Duran, lived good lives, and their home was a big part of it. They took pride in their home and always kept a beautiful yard with all the lush fruit trees that my grandparents had planted. Currently, my son lives in the home with his family. Recently, we learned that our family home was on the map to be removed for a side-access street related to the I Street Bridge replacement project. Since then, we have gone through a roller coaster of emotions with worry and fear of the unknown. Thankfully, we have learned this project is currently only 65% approved. Our 1888, fourth-generation family home is a very well-maintained, beautiful, historic piece of property. Just recently, we received compliments from people passing by. I believe it brings historic value to the community. We want to follow the examples of my grandparents and parents and keep the house looking beautiful. The idea of it being demolished for a side-alley service street doesn't make sense. It leads me to believe planners of this project have not walked the area. It doesn't make sense to needlessly demolish an occupied, well-cared-for home. We are requesting support to discuss better alternatives for the Second Street connection. There has to be better options. We are excited about the new bridge and not seeking to cause delays. Our concern is with the service road for Second Street access. We're requesting support for a commitment to have open communication and allow direct input. I'm requesting for support from you to put this topic as an agenda item on the next city council meeting, so that we may discuss better alternatives and options while we still have time. Thank you.
The next speaker is Sylvester Gilmedy.
My name is Sylvester Gilmed Jr. I am here in support of removing the X on the house and property at 213 Third Street in the old Broderick neighborhood of West Sacramento for demolition to make way for an access road for the bridge project. The property in question is more than a house sitting on land. It is the four-generation home of the Marquez, Duran, and now Sanchez families for 80 years. I personally have known three of the four generations, and my immediate Lobspina family, which have residency ties to old Broderick and West Sacramento for over 100 years, knew the first-generation Marquez family well. The Marquez and Duran family have been major contributors to Broderick, West Sacramento communities over their 80 years of residency. Molly Marquez Duran was the first Eucharist minister at Holy Cross Parish Church, and her brother Louis Marquez served decades as a Washington Unified School District educator and was a principal for years at Elkhorn Village Elementary. The home now resides Molly's grandson, Mike Sanchez, and his family. The house is one of three older homes still standing on Third Street. It sits to the north of the foot of the existing I Street Bridge. It is mixed in with new townhomes and mixed multi-use buildings. It is the only well-kept and presented home property on the street. The two other homes on Third Street and properties around the corner on Second Street are a blight to the neighborhood. I walked the two streets with Mike Sanchez recently and feel there has to be other options to find an alternate path for the bridge project access road and to keep the Marquez-Duran-Sanchez home standing. I ask for a city or bridge project representative, or one or all of you city council members, to take the same walk with Mike Sanchez to see if there is an alternative location to place an access road on Third and Second Streets. Mike Sanchez and his supporting family would like to work in cooperation with West Sacramento city officials and staff. I ask for the city council to give consideration to support finding another place for the access road and to please, please, make this request an agenda item for the next city council meeting, the very next one. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matt Delgado.
Good evening. My name is Matt Delgado. I'm speaking on behalf of the Sanchez family. In regards to the I Street Bridge replacement project, I've reviewed the environmental impact plan. It references two reports by the City of West Sacramento. The first is the Washington-specific plan, and the second is Washington-realized. Both these plans make reference to how important it is to the city of West Sacramento to maintain and preserve historic buildings. As part of that, there was a survey commissioned in 2014 called the Washington District Historic Resources Survey. On that report, number three is 213 Third Street, the property in question. I went through all of the properties listed in the historic survey and built in 1888. 213 Third Street is the oldest home slash building in the Broderick community by one year, according to the county of Yallow. It's unconscionable to me that this project, the I Street replacement, would be allowed to raise the oldest home in Broderick, which has belonged to the, an historic West Sacramento family for the past 80 years. I ask you to use your influence to work with the city of Sacramento to change the plan, change the location of the access road, and I would request that you put this topic on the next city council meeting for discussion with all the stakeholders. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Juan Sanchez.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I am here representing Local 39. I'm one of the shop stewards that worked on the negotiations. My name's Juan Sanchez. I don't know if I said that. I'm an equipment mechanic, Public Works, been there 15 years now. And I'd just like to say that this is my first negotiation and by far the most professional and amicable negotiations that I thought. I didn't expect the level of professionalism from both sides, and we got that and then some. So thank you for your work, and thank you for hopefully passing the contract. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chung Park.
Good evening, council. My name is Chung Park. I am the business representative for the stationary local 39. We have 96 members here that work for the city. First, I want to thank Madam Mayor for the privilege of leading the pledge tonight. As an immigrant, a naturalized citizen, and a veteran myself, I was touched by the request. I just wanted to say that our objective in negotiations with the city this time was to continue to maintain harmonious relationships, but also close some of the gap, because although our members are the ones who keep the waters running, the sewers flowing, the roads maintenance, the streetlights maintenance, and basically keep all of the things of the city functioning and running, they always felt like they were kind of like an afterthought. And so, we're not trying to take away from critical service like police and fire, but we needed to close some of the gap between upper management, police, fire, and the rest of us. So, when you, I know the city tries to be equitable and get similar raises across the board, but when you have management personnel making over $150,000 a year, and we still have members who are out there in the sun toiling, making $22 an hour, to give everybody across the board 3% raises, and if you follow that pattern, ultimately, the gap, the disparity is going to widen. So our objective this time was to close some of that gap and to send a message to you guys that although most of our members see their jobs at the city as an opportunity to serve, and majority of them come in every day not to just make a living, but to literally make a difference every day. And so, we want that recognition, and we believe we began the process of closing the gap this time. And it's true what Juan said, it was very professional and harmonious. Your team, I have to recognize your outside contract negotiator, Kevin Flott, but in particular, your in-house team, Leanne Lee, your HR director, Caitlin Montez, your senior HR analyst, and Derek Bowman, the team you assembled, we found them very courteous, very empathetic to our cause, expert in their fields, and we worked together to come up with creative solutions that which we're satisfied with, and we maintained harmonious relationships and bargained in good faith throughout. So we just wanted to thank you guys and recognize your team for that.
Our next speaker is Howard McKinley.
My name's Howard McKinley. I'm a City of West Sacramento Senior Parks and Grounds Worker. My coworker, Juan, and my union rep, Chung Park, said it all. There's nothing more I can add. I just want to offer my appreciation and my respect for the city council. We definitely want a yes vote on the MOU, and I just commend the city negotiating team for their professionalism and the very amicable. We had good negotiations, very friendly, and I think we did a good job working together. And I just wanted to offer my thanks, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rhonda Pope Flores.
I think a few council meetings ago, I expressed concern about the riverfront and investors coming in and disrupting families that have been here all their lives. And then I'm approached by the family and told that their house is in danger of being destroyed for development. 213 Third Street was built in the 1880s. This is a slam dunk. This should be on your historic inventory. This should be a protected property. This should be something that the city is proud to have, because this is a home that is over 100 years old. What happened to protecting historic resources? I don't know if the city has a historic resource plan, inventory, but I am going to urge you to put this family's home on the historic inventory and protect this family and this historic home. This is really a shame that this is even happening. When I was approached and told about this, it's like shame, shame, shame again. I think I've said shame a few times. There's been so many historic homes that have been destroyed in the Broderick and Bright area. This needs to stop. We have to start protecting these historic homes and these historic resources. I just want to say that we need to stop trying to compete with Sacramento. We're not Sacramento. We're West Sacramento, and we have families that have been here all their lives, and they've invested, and they've been here. And to just dismiss them to build a road, alley, whatever it is, I don't even care. It's wrong. It shouldn't happen. And I don't know what the process is as far as consultation, but something seriously lapsed here. I'm going to, I just want to urge the city of West Sacramento, I don't know, you have a historic preservation department? Our tribe has a historic preservation officer. I'm going to be reaching out to this family, and I'm going to be doing all I can to help them save this home, because it's wrong. This should be a no-brainer. This is a shame. This is wrong. I went to Elkhorn. Mr. Marquez was my principal. This was the home he grew up in. Do we not have any regard for the things that our families have built, that the things that we've developed and we've connected to, and hearing what they've done and their work and their service in the community? They deserve more. That home deserves more. Please reconsider this.
Our next speaker is Francis Luna.
Good evening. This is the first time I've lived here, so I'm nervous. I have some concerns regarding Ridgeway Lakes. First, I'd like to explain that my family has had property there on Seymour Avenue since the 50s. So when they first constructed the lakes, it affected the well. I had to dig, had to have a new well dug, and then I had to have work again done about 10 years later. So my concerns with the, I heard this on the news, that there was talking about different things to do, and one of them was to dig a new well. If they do anything like that, my concern is the water table. And a lot of my neighbors, like me, we have wells. We have no choice. We do not have city waters. So to me, looking at some of them, it's, at this situation, it's, to me, it's cosmetic, and for me, it's survival. The last time this happened, the firemen had to come and bring me water, so we could have some water on the property, and my neighbors provided me water with a hose. And we do that for each other, because the water table has changed so much in West Sacramento. And I just wanted to list my concerns there. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maria Grahalva.
I don't know whether there has to be another way.
We have no additional speakers on Item One.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. I did hear a few items that are also included, people speak of items that are on our consent agenda, and they can feel free to participate, but they do need to submit a comment card for items on the consent agenda. So next is our consent agenda, Items 2 through 10. Are there any requests to remove an item for questions or a presentation by our administration? Madam Mayor, I would like to poll six. Okay. Any other requests? I'll be polling Item 10. Would you like to ask your questions before we ask for public comment or after? We can ask for public comment, and then I'll ask. We'll open it up for public comment on our consent agenda at this time. If there are any requests to speak, Madam Clerk?
Linda Sherwood has requested to speak on Item 6.
Linda Sherwood.
a few. If the residents want a well, or they want rocks, let them get together, find out what the cost is, and share it. There's a lot that can be done for the city with that money. The council considering this item is wrong, wrong, wrong. Taxpayers' money is to be spent to improve the lives of the population, not just for a few. Thank you.
Mr. Chung Park has requested to speak on Items 4 and 9. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chung. You have 30 minutes for each item.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think I'll need the full 3 minutes for each item. On Item 4, Contracting Out, just wanted to say that, again, Local 39 represents the members here, and a lot of them are residents as well, and they're truly dedicated servants. They see their jobs as opportunities to make difference every day and not just make a living. So if there is a need in the city where the current staff are not able to completely fulfill, we're not going to adamantly oppose the city contracting out services, but we just wanted to ask you to be mindful that it doesn't encroach upon Local 39 bargaining unit duties, or it doesn't deprive them of any regularly scheduled overtime, things like that. But again, at the same time, we're not going to adamantly oppose the city trying to get the proper individuals to come in and do the work that needs to be done. And so, that was on Item 4. On Item 9, once again, I wanted to reiterate that we're going to maintain a harmonious relationship with the city and always seek mutually beneficial solutions, but at the same time, we're always going to be reminding you not to forget about Local 39 members and the services that they provide day to day. And we're going to continue to future in negotiations to strive to close the gap more and more. So, thank you.
We have no additional requests to speak.
All right. Thank you. I'll close the public comment, bring it back to council, and we have Item 6. Councilmember McCullough.
I do have some questions from the staff regarding water levels, and just something I heard on public comment also. So we've heard what's happened before, you know, when the city's done that. Can you address that concern?
What the city is doing to address the low water levels?
Well, what I'm concerned... Well, what I'm concerned with is that residents have had problems before when they've tried to mitigate the water levels out there in the Bridgeway Island area. We heard from a member of the public that, you know, she had, she had some real problems out there. So I'd, I'd like to find out if this is going to be repeated or what, what could happen.
If the low water levels are going to be repeated in the future?
Right. I mean, where, where are we drawing this from?
So the, the water levels in Bridgeway Lake normally, one of the, one of the main reasons Bridgeway Lakes exists is for water detention basin, for stormwater runoff. Um, so with the rains that we've received in the last week, the water level's risen five inches in the past three days roughly, and that's the main source of our water. It comes from the community and it comes from adjoining communities through the, through the, um, the main drain canal. Um, there also is a current pump at Well 20 where we are taking water and putting it into the main drain canal that head towards the lake well.
So I, I guess what my question is, there was another member of the public, and I, I'd like to know these questions because I think, I know public comment doesn't allow us to respond back or you to respond back. So who generally benefits from this project that we're proposing to undertake?
The, the project with, regarding Ford Construction?
Uh, on number six.
Item number six.
Right, replenish.
Can I?
Yes, please.
Speak freely, or, okay. Sorry, I haven't been to one of these live.
It's okay.
Um, so the, item number six, the approval of the construction with Ford, um, what it is, is for small riprap walls within the main drain canal. So we're, um, taking the water that's within the main drain canal, and we put little rock walls in it to help divert water to the lake. Um, it's not cutting it off 100%, so we're still letting water weep through to help with habitat, wildlife habitat and everything on the other sides of the walls, but it's just a step that we're trying to take so that we can get more water there and we don't have to result the bigger project, like maybe a well system or something down the road. Um, it is funded through the CFD, those, the Bridgeway Lake CFD, so the residents of that CFD are the ones who are funding this project. It's not coming from general funds or other means.
Could you please explain what a CFD is so the public also knows?
Yeah, for sure. So the CFDs are community facility districts, um, and the city win, I'd be talking to, okay, say Ford, okay. So as the city can, um, builds out and has developments throughout the city, the developers and the city work together so that way they can establish funds that each homeowner or each unit is going to be paying within that community towards maintenance of their community. So the Bridgeway Lakes community pays X number of dollars per house into a fund, and we use that funds to maintain the lake, maintain the landscape, maintain the street life.
Okay, thank you. I, I think that maybe explains a lot to individuals who may not feel that the city should be paying this. The funds are already there.
Yeah, the funds are there.
Because the people who purchase the homes are paying those funds in their annual taxes, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All I have.
Go ahead.
No, I, I understood that it come from the, the CFD, and essentially with respect to the, the communities that have established CFDs, they have the opportunity to fund improvements such as this, and this has been a long-term, uh, matter of concern for that area of, of the city. So is that correct?
No, most definitely.
Okay. Um, the question I had is, can you please give us a, a good understanding of what it means to have safe water levels and have the alternative? If we do not do anything about this, what's the risk to public safety?
Um, so right now, the concern with the safe water levels is that if people fall in the lake, they're not going to be able to get out. Um, a lot of the backyards don't have fences up against them, um, and we don't want anybody stuck in the mud or in the lake or drowning because they can't climb out of those walls. Um, there was, there is a concern about the safety of the structure of the walls. If the lake water level gets too low, um, we went through all the engineering reports and the, um, the documents from when it was built, and that's not a concern at this point, but if the water level did get, you know, significantly lower, multiple feet lower, then that could be an issue that we'd be looking at. It's the walls bailing in, sloughing off into the lake, and the properties where the people are living would also be, um, damaged.
Damaged.
Compromised. But we're not at that point, and hopefully we never reached that point, but we're just trying to, yeah, promote public safety and safety for the structure.
So this is not just merely an aesthetic investment?
No.
Okay, and just to reiterate, it isn't coming from the general fund, which would compete with other investments such as public safety and/or salaries for our employees?
Yeah, and it was also the most cost-effective project. Um, I mean, we've looked at a myriad of solutions to try to get water to it, and this was the one, um, where you got the most bang for your buck, and it was the easiest thing to do, and it's already been benefiting. So the, the walls are in, and it's raised the level on the other side of the gate, and the gate valve in the main drain canal about five and a half inches, and we currently have water flowing into the lake, which hasn't happened at all this year, um, because our water levels in the main drain canal have always been so low. So it's functioning, it's doing its purpose, and.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Sure. Um, just to, to make sure that I'm, like, fully aware. So you talked about, um, the fact that we, this is actually going to help mitigate having to dig a well in the future. I think that's what I heard. Fingers crossed. Okay, perfect. Um, and the only reason why I'm asking that, just again, so I'm following this full line, is because what we heard from our, a public comment was a woman who lives on Sycamore saying that in the, Seymour, um, in the past, that what has happened is her, her well, her water was affected. And so I, I do want to make sure I, I clearly asked this, this question. In this case, we won't be digging an additional well, and so in theory, her water or any of her, um, community or colleagues or neighbors' water should not be impacted by this project.
This will not affect water levels at all.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Nice clear answer.
If anything, it should help give more water to the, to the ground table.
All right. Thank you. That was very clear.
Thank you, Mr. Culbertson. I just also want to say that there are two entities involved, is City of West Sacramento and the Reclamation District 900 partnered together, and we took action in Reclamation District 900 for the permit of being able to, to do this work. Um, and Parks and Rec is responsible for the, you know, the lakes and other, you know, public places for Parks and Rec. And appreciate your work and a lot of time you've all spent to come up with a solution. We've been talking about this, um, condition that is going on in Bridgeway Lakes. One of the other concerns I heard, um, which you've heard referenced by Mayor Portemarosco, is the danger of somebody falling in and to be able to climb out. Um, I mean, it can get really, you know, steep in there. Is there a way to add some ladders on the sides or something to help somebody if they can swim across to, you know, to get a ladder out? Is there, is there a way to get out?
Yeah, there, well, on the private side, there's multiple people who have boat docks and boat ramps that somebody could swim to if needed. Um, otherwise, we also have a boat ramp over by the boathouse that you could use, um, would be the main access point.
Okay. Okay, that was just a concern I, I thought was unaddressed from a constituent who called me and brought that to my attention. And Mayor Portemarosco, do you have another question?
Oh, I just, thank you for that. I, I, Mr. Culbertson, you did mention that it was a detention main.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and that's one of those things that when I first joined the council, I didn't understand, you know, we have, um, Summerfield Park, for example, that where my kid plays soccer, and it's, you know, depressed, and I didn't realize that was a detention basis. We're in a flood zone, and, you know, we have several of them around the city. I didn't actually recognize Bridgeway Lakes as being one of the major ones, so it's a necessity for the public safety of the entire city, not just necessarily an amenity for the folks that live along that area of the city.
Most definitely.
Oh, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. And, um, just, um, the Culbertson, if, you know, the members of the community, if you can just contact, you know, connect with them in case they had additional questions, um, they're sitting in the back, and just let them know how they can contact you for additional questions they may have in case we didn't fully answer it here. Thank you so much for taking care of this.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for item number 10, which I'm really, I'm just so relieved, and we have Mr. Alan Lang here as well, I don't know if you can raise your hand. Thank you, okay. Now I just want you to come on up and just share a little bit as well. Mr. Robinson, though, I do have questions for you first. Mr. Robinson is going to go first, I have questions. Mr. Robinson, this is based on your analysis, this is based on a 2017 broadband plan, and it was on our strategic plan management agenda, which was, um, which produced this broadband plan, which is very good. I, I thank you so much for emailing it to me. I wanted to have some, some connection to why we have, um, uh, our proposal today to work with Bellivision. And, um, and it's also now included in our strategic plan to make sure that we have access to affordable internet service and digital literacy, um, which is important now in, in our day-to-day, where now we're more reliant on internet service for making sure that, you know, the elderly have access to, you know, for elderly who are having appointments online, um, and children who are learning, um, online as well these days. And I wanted to, you know, ask a few questions since then, since that 2017 broadband plan. Um, if there, you know, there's this 5G broadband technology that you referenced in your analysis, is there, how, how do we access that? Is there, I've been asked that a few times, and I didn't, I, I didn't know about it until I read it here.
Right. Yeah, well, that, you know, that, that is a form of infrastructure that's provided by the marketplace, so different, different providers come in and they get their permits and they put those installations in, so it's a matter of just kind of shopping, and it's not available in every location yet, so that technology is expected to become a lot more common and a lot more ubiquitous going forward. I think I, I think I counted 56 or 57 permits for that that had been approved as, as part of the process that we put in place to help implement the plan. But for an individual consumer, they would have to, you know, get online or call their cell phone or their existing internet provider and ask if they've got coverage, because different, different companies have different coverage areas for that.
So, so that would be through your cell phone, and then it would probably, I'm just trying to figure out how that works. Could, could it be like, um, internet service that your computer can access, or do you have to have? And Alan, you can also point to that.
I think that's, that's more of an Alan question, but I think it's a, my, my understanding is for, for your home service, you would have a little, a little device, the ones that were shown about the size of a pack of cards that would kind of stick in your window, and then there's these installations on the utility poles or other infrastructure that beams the internet signal kind of to you, so you get to have the internet without digging your yard or whatever.
That's good. And 56 permits is a lot, just, I'm curious to know how many have actually been installed.
Yeah, I can find that out.
Okay, and I, sorry, I didn't, wasn't sure if I was clear on that one before. And are there any other examples of what was implemented since the 2017 broadband plan?
Yeah, there are, there are some other things. I didn't list every, every single thing. We did at one point, and I, I could get the details on this, we did make an effort to market one of the federal programs that provides subsidy for broadband, and I believe we at least did that with social media, and I believe we also did a utility bill insert on that. So I can, I can check, I can get, I can get back to you on the numbers with that, but we did, we did do some outreach on that, and I think that is one of the avenues that we're definitely going to explore here, because there's both, you know, there's, there's infrastructure and then there's affordability questions when you're trying to make sure that folks have the service that they need, that we're going to be looking at both of those things.
Okay, that's very helpful. And I understand that there are current subsidies that maybe AT&amp;T is tapping, but WAVE is not, um, and it's a, it, it reduces your rate to access the internet. Um, I asked this question when I was in a meeting with the Federal Communications, um, meeting in DC during our cap-to-cap. They weren't aware, and Trish was with me, um, and so I haven't heard back about that, but, uh, trying to make sure that any federal subsidy that is available today, that all of our, um, you know, internet commu, you know, internet access services are implementing it, and how do we, how do we enforce that in some way? Next, is there a reason why there is no longer, um, you know, broadband since 2017 on the strategic plan? I'm trying to figure out what happened.
I, I would have to go back and research that a little bit, but, excuse me, my sense is that the original task that, that made it to the strategic plan was the creation of the plan that you referenced, and then once that got adopted, it became just a matter of staff endeavoring to implement that, so it didn't, it didn't have a strategic dimension anymore for the council. You'd already given your direction and we were implementing it.
I see. I, I perceived that to be an urgent need when we were going through COVID, um, and I understand in the analysis that during COVID, you know, I think everybody was struggling, you know, um, public service didn't have the resources to do work from home, um, and yet, you know, we did have a strategic plan earlier that year, um, but somehow my brother's keeper got in because there was an immediate, you know, urgency for that, and that got folded into the strategic plan. However, I viewed, um, access to internet services just as, um, just as urgent as it was, um, and, you know, when we added something in, aside from what was, um, pretty much early in the year what we had decided and didn't see as an urgency, but this for me still maintain, is for me a top priority, um, and I'd like to see what we can do to increase access, you know, quickly and be in the front line to be able to access the federal funding as that dialogue has, um, been going on by our own, one of our own local representatives, who will be our assembly member next January. Um, and, um, the, the 2017 broadband plan, as you mentioned, highlighted initiatives such as on page four as the $10 plan or the reduced rates. So you're saying that something did occur since the plan was implemented that we access?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know that it was that specific program, but there was, I, I can find the acronym, but there's, there's a federal program that provides subsidy for folks, I believe it was a COVID-related program, that we did obtain some marketing materials for and share those.
Okay, great. And then page 51 on the report refers to the city's conduit. I think we owned some level of real estate on this. Um, are there any additional updates or thoughts about this since the report?
I would have to go back and research that. The, several of the different, one of the challenges with this, with this work, and we'll probably, you know, in the context of this study, we'll probably look at this, is that different dimensions of the broadband challenge are sort of housed in different departments within the city, so there's a need to kind of bring that together. And in, in this case, our economic development and housing department is, are the ones that manage the real estate that is those conduits. So I know there have, there have been instances where we've shared conduit with telecommunications providers, but I, I would have to go back and talk to them and research, you know, when specifically that happened and what the nature of those transactions.
Yeah, I'm ve, I'm very interested in learning more, willing to spend more time with you to understand that, um, what all that is about. I think it's intriguing that we have something, um, when we were at the Cal Cities Conference, uh, there was a provider who installed, um, lines on the sidewalks, and I can share a little more information about that, um, and maybe that could be a resource. It's, I, was kind of like a partnership between that provider and the city, and it is pretty similar to what I read in the report that we can do, and, um, you know, it just kind of expands what we have already so that we can, um, expand it citywide, and maybe that could be an opportunity. I'll share it with Alan as well. Um, and so, thank you. Thank you so much, John. I appreciate your, excuse me.
Can I have a question as well?
Do you want to go first? Okay. Just a real quick question, John. Um, Bellivision was the only one who answered the request for proposal, and I noticed when we had, like, our, our market that we have, uh, on Saturdays, we also only got one request, so I'm just wondering, um, how do we market online? Because we only seem to be getting, like, one person that ever answers these RFPs for certain things, I'm just curious.
Well, it, each, each one is different, you know, I mean, every, every RFP that we put out, we're putting out, you know, this, an offering into the marketplace, and there has to be a firm that's interested in doing that work. I think the challenge for probably both the market and for this project is that it's a very eclectic, kind of a niche subspecialty. There's not, you know, there's not a ton of companies that are out there making their living doing this kind of analysis, so it was a stretch. And we, you know, the, this actually, we released this twice. The first time, there were no, there were no respondents, and we did it, we did it again, and we simply simplified the scope a little bit, and we, we always, we don't just put it up, but we always try to do some research and figure out, and what are the companies that do this work, you know, in this half of the United States, say, and we make sure that they're on an email list that we send out, so there's an email blast that goes out, and then, um, the, the RFP is also on a website that the city contracts with that advertises those things for us, so we get some extra reach that way. And then typically, companies who make a living sharing this kind of opportunity with other companies are on that list, so we get a pretty wide dissemination of the work. So I think for, you know, a, a more typical kind of a, a planning consulting or an engineering consulting type job, we would get plenty of responses, but for the, the more eclectic ones, it can be challenging.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. No, it's great to see this on the consent agenda and have it moving forward. I, I just wanted to clarify, um, back in 2016 when I joined this council, I think we were talking about that well before that night. We don't have the benefit of. Councilmember Ledesma or our city manager here to clarify the record here. But fair to say that this has been interwoven in a lot of different initiatives, including Measure E with smart cities, as well as all of the discussions we've had about utilities and investments and infrastructure in order to lay the line, lay the lines. That way we would eventually be at this point where we can expand broadband to our cities. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So this isn't something that's just recently arisen as a council priority, but rather something that's been enroven for at least a decade?
Yeah, it's, the discussions have been ongoing, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. And Mr. Lang, you can come on up and feel free to start with your own introduction and presentation and then answer any questions and we'll follow up with, you know, and then council member, I'll call his question about the demand for your services today.
All right. I'll start just quick introduction. Alan Lang with Valley Vision. We're a local nonprofit organization based in, in Sacramento, but serve the greater Sacramento region on a variety of topics and issues from broadband to workforce development, cleaner air issues, a number of different areas. Our real emphasis and focus is trying to, to bring one research to really figure out what is the core of the issue? What's the core of the challenge? That comes through data, knowing what to go to, but also really engaging community, the residents, the businesses, others, to really hear directly from them, what they're perceiving as either the challenges, the opportunities, what do we need to be working on? And then with that information, really bringing groups together that are going to be part of the solution, knowing that something like broadband, it's not just going to be the city who addresses this issue. It's a, it's a combination of the city working with internet service providers, working with nonprofit groups, working with other community organizations to really help develop that infrastructure on one side. But then also the outreach that you're talking about in terms of the affordability and making sure that people are getting connected, making use of, I think the program you're referring to is like the Affordable Connectivity Program, to make sure that people that are eligible are getting those rebates, are able to access those services. So really taking that holistic approach is, is what our goal is. So I'm going to go ahead and pause for a second there and see, because I know that there are some questions. So I want to turn it over. But just as a quick introduction, hopefully that was a little helpful.
No, no, continue on.
Oh, okay. Then I will go through, I guess, so one of the questions was just about the need. Was that the, talk about that a little bit? Was that?
I think, well, I think since 2017, a lot has happened.
Yeah.
If you can talk a little bit about that, that would be great.
Yeah.
And I, and I don't, I necessarily don't think there was a huge demand for internet back in 2017, where in 2020, here we are, like, you know, so now the demand from you and what you're seeing out there.
Yeah.
And if you can also share a little bit about what happened in Sacramento. I had a conversation with Trish on, you know, prior to 2020, some initiatives that were implemented. If you can share a little bit about that as well.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll start just on the need. You compared against 2017, which really wasn't that long ago, but I agree. I don't think, I think the need was definitely there for everybody to have equal and equitable access to internet that is reliable, it's its speeds that they can use for a variety of services. Now that's education, that's work from home, entertainment, just staying connected with what's going on in the, in the community. So I, certainly the demand was there in 2017. I don't think it was at the forefront of kind of the, the public discussion about it, though. And I think, I will point to the pandemic is one of those things that everybody really realized how critical having access, and I'll emphasize reliable access to the internet is, where kids were schooling from home, people were working from home. And all of a sudden, not having that reliability and that, that's something that they could just count on of, hey, I need to get online for my work product, for my school product, whatever it might be. When that wasn't there, then it became very noticeable for all of our residents, all of our citizens, for public agencies and others. So I think that was a really real turning point. And we're seeing that since then with, and the timing of this project, I think is, is great for West Sacramento as well, that with the influx of funding that's coming from both the federal government sources, state sources, there is a time where there's just kind of at the beginning of starting to release a lot of additional funds for local jurisdictions to make use and improve the infrastructure, partner with internet service providers and others to be able to advance those so that everybody has high-speed internet to their, whether it's to their home, to their place of business. So there's a lot of opportunity that didn't exist even two years ago. So that's something that we really want to, hopefully, we were going to make sure that we expedite this project from Valley Vision's standpoint, so that that information, those findings, those recommendations are there as soon as possible. We're not going to hurry through this, though. We want to make sure that we're doing a thorough effort. But we do want those results delivered to the city as soon as possible, so that as these additional funding sources are becoming available and opening up, the city is primed to be able to take advantage of that with fresh information, data that is in real time, that really expresses what the needs are, what the demands are, where the priorities are in the city. So that's going to be our approach with this. And you're right that since 2017, a lot has changed. I think that with the, with the ability and with some of these new funding sources, it really brings a lot of additional partners to the table as well, that anytime you're talking about developing infrastructure, there's a, there's a high cost to that. It's not something that you decide, I want internet running to this neighborhood that didn't receive it before. And it can be done in a, in a short period of time with little resource invest, investment. It requires a lot of planning and also the, the dollars to make it happen. So hopefully with that state sources, those federal sources coming in, again, we want to be able to position the city of West Sacramento so it can really take advantage of those to the fullest extent possible.
Thank you. And Sacramento did have a digital literacy program. Can you share, and you were involved.
Yeah.
Can you share a little more about that?
Yeah. So I, yeah, would love to. Thank you. Thank you for that opportunity. We are involved in its, there is a, a, one of the groups that I'll mention a couple that Valley Vision, we are managing, responsible for. One is a, an, or a coalition that's designated by the California Public Utilities Commission called the Connected Capital Area Broadband Consortium. Our goal with that is really advancing infrastructure, making sure that that is throughout the Sacramento, greater Sacramento region, that that's being pushed forward. Another piece of that, though, not, not through the California Public Utilities Commission, but just more, it kind of came about organically, was the Capital Region Digital Inclusion Coalition. And that's something that was formulated because really trying to target that accessibility side of, of the equation. So working with libraries, schools, nonprofit groups, others who are really interested in making sure that everybody, all of our residents have full access to the internet, high-speed internet, reliable internet, as I said earlier. And that is an ongoing initiative. So we're, we're continuing to move that forward. It's something that will, I'll kind of put a plug here. It's open to anybody that wants to participate. And we have kind of a growing base for that particular coalition. So would love to have more people involved and engaged, have at least quarterly meetings where we're reconvening and talking about very specific topics. The next one we have will be, actually it's taking place at the end of this week, but really focused on the Affordable Connectivity Program, trying to really advance that, make sure people are aware of what that program is that provides a $30 rebate for all eligible residents or households. And there's a lot of eligibility, automatic qualifiers, things like being on SSDI or, or your child is in a Title I school. So a lot of people are going to be taking advantage of this program. And right now, enrollment, this is not just in our local environment, this is just not in the state, this is throughout the nation, is pretty low, less than 30%. So we want to get that up. So it really speaks to just how big that demand is. And we think it's a, a lack of awareness is one. But then also hearing from kind of the trusted sources to be able to promote that. Because we know that the, the fear of something that sounds too good to be true, I don't trust it. I don't know if I'm going to, if I'm going to sign up for this program. So that's one of the focuses. I just use that as an example for this meeting this week with the Capital Region Digital Inclusion Coalition, what they're really focusing on, what they're talking about to hopefully help encourage and promote that, that program. But that's an example. And again, open throughout for anybody throughout the region. And we'd love to have more participation in that.
So is it open to nonprofit organizations today, even in the West Sacramento area?
Yes, absolutely. Yep.
I'll try to get some more information so I can publicize that.
Okay. And I will, yeah, certainly we'll send you some emails, if not later tonight, first thing tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm pretty sure United Way, California Capital Region does participate in that.
Yeah.
We also serve Yolo County. And so maybe we can think through how to ban that.
Absolutely. That'd be great. Thanks, you.
Yeah, just wanted to make a comment. I know some of our seniors aren't really familiar with having to access the internet a lot. As a matter of fact, we're having this wonderful program, Rock the Block. And one of the seniors called me and she said, they haven't called me. So I called them back and they said, oh, no problem. We just need to send her to get a digital signature. So I called her and she said, guess what is that? You know, she didn't know what the digital signature was. She didn't know how to access that. Luckily, they were going to go over personally into her home and stuff. But I'm finding that that happens with a lot of folks. And I'm just wondering if that's part of the package that you also bring. You said they were educational. Would they also have, she didn't even have an iPad or anything like that? Is that part of the program?
Yeah, I'll, I'll answer in two ways. One, I'll speak to the Affordable Connectivity Program, which is, again, it's a federal program. That, in addition to providing that, I mentioned the $30 rebate for qualifying households. There is also, please don't quote me on this, I think it's $100 that can be provided for someone to get a discount on a device, things like a tablet or, you know, a phone, a computer. So that is part of that program for those that are eligible. So again, don't quote me on that. I think it's $100, but I'm not 100% positive. But that is one that through the Affordable Connectivity Program, people can, can get that to help, help them at least offset, if not totally cover the cost of that device. The other piece I'll note in terms of our, like going back to this, with the broadband planning that we're hoping to do, or not hoping to do, we will be doing. Looking at the access and availability of internet services, not just as a community as a whole, but trying to look at, at population levels, whether it is older adults, or maybe it's, it's households with limited English proficiency, other things like that. To help be able to get us a better understanding of what are those households that aren't accessing the internet now? And therefore, what do we need to be focusing on in terms of where we try and make sure that, that the, not only the service is available, meaning the infrastructure is available, but also making sure that they're aware of, of the programs that are available that can help offset some of those costs? Or just the, the education about the internet itself, where there are a lot of fears that exist as well for people not wanting to access for fear of privacy or a number of other issues. But where do we need to be targeting that kind of education outreach? So that'll be something as part of our, our study we're, we're wanting to incorporate.
I do have, just on that, because it's just related to Councilmember Alkla. So when you, when you talk through the, the fact that the education piece as well, well, you also just the, what we just heard was just a simple hardware too, right? So having access to the actual technology. And I can, I can say in city of Sacramento, in Sacramento County at least, that through this coalition, you have access to free tablets, free, right? And, and other things because city of Sacramento, Super Fretkova, SMD and other organizations have come together to provide those. Again, we, we currently are not involved, but I, I can say that there are nonprofits that are giving away, we're one of them, these technologies to folks.
And, and that's the, that piece I can't emphasize enough, that the, the value of the, the Digital Inclusion Coalition is that, that it's a number of different groups coming together, all bringing resources to the table. To say, here's what we can do. Here's how we can help our community.
Yeah.
And then working with, having that conversation amongst all these groups to really figure out, how can we solve this together? Knowing that, again, what I said early on, it's not just one group, one entity that solves this.
It's a coalition.
But a number coming together to do that. And you're absolutely right that, yeah, there, there are different groups that do exist that end up being the ones that are doing the collection of those, of those tablets or, or devices. And then making them available to be able to give away to others who might be in need. Yeah.
No other questions? I just want to say, Mr. Lang, thank you so much for your partnership and coming back and reapplying, you know, this RFP to be able to do this work. It's incredibly important for us to be able to expand, you know, from the great work that's happened from the 2017 report onward. So I think that report was very informative when I read it and provided a lot of information. If you could see the little maps and things and where everything is weak and strong and has little grades. But it was, it was very helpful. So probably, we know a lot more from our constituents where everything is not working, but, but that would have been helpful for me to just take their part. So thank you so much.
I, I cannot thank you enough. We are very excited to get started on this project and look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
All right. Appreciate it.
All right.
With that, I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Councilmember Early moved and Councilmember, I heard two seconds. Who wants to?
It's okay, take it.
Mayor Protem Morosco seconded.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alkala?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Morosco?
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. This item is approved. Next, we have on our general administration function, we have no regular agenda, so we have a general administration function, part two, council communications. Are there any reports back? Nope. Not this one. Mayor Protem Morosco?
Thank you. On, well, I have two actual for Regional Sanitation Board. August 24th, 2022, we met, we discussed the Harvest Water Program, quarterly report for April 1st through June 30th, 2022. In addition, talked about, we've been talking for actually a couple of years about future staffing and legal merger for Sacramento Regional County Sanitation Board and the Sewer District. At the same time, there is going to be a subcommittee to continue those discussions. But the, the city of West Sacramento joined regional sanitation as kind of a, not as an original member, but just as a, a late joiner. And we get a benefit from joining the group because we now can benefit from the new Echo Water Project that helps with all of our sanitation. And actually, Oscar Viegas, our county supervisor and I are the representatives in the Yolo County region. We actually were thinking about maybe doing something in West Sacramento and/or Yolo County to talk about, like, educating residents about where the affluent goes, you know, because this is a very, very big project. With that stated, there are a lot of other items that regional sand is funding, projects. And one of them is just now that everything is reopening, we actually pitched an idea of opening up to West Sacramento. It's for field trips. It's, I can't remember the name right now, unfortunately. My head's a little hazy. But it is a creamery, believe it or not. And it has a lot of wildlife. And they take a lot of Elk Grove Unified School District children in Sacramento Unified School District. And I said, well, how about Washington Unified? We can get buses, you know, to take kids over there. So I know that they're open to that opportunity. And we forwarded it over to our school district representatives in hopes that they can help facilitate that. On September 14th, we met again. We discussed the direction to staff of the Bio-Generation Facility Project Procurement Approach. We talked about impact fees related to tiny homes and trying to reduce them because they leave so little of footprint in comparison to some of their larger home equivalents. And then we also received a finance report from our senior civil engineer, which is just a report of the bonds of our district financing authority. Finally, we also met with the Yolo Commission to address homelessness on September 1st. We discussed our county plan. We're doing some updates to the county plan. And also some of, we also share what's going on in each city. There's always a lot going on in West Sacramento. So there's, you know, no shortage of, of things to share. But we did talk about what we were going to do with respect to weather temperature respite centers. We did receive HAP three update and our, we took, we all took a survey. I think that was Sharon amongst the council members to talk about what our goals would be for a commission like this. One of the goals was to increase affordable housing options for homeless or those experiencing homelessness. And the city of West Sacramento was recommended as a recipient for some of the funding. And that would have gone to 234,328 for the Home Key operating subsidy, so that we can continue operating our programs here. There are others throughout the county. But I will say that, and I'll reiterate, because I, I had heard this before, but until having the opportunity to sit on this commission, recognize the city of West Sacramento is one of the most progressive in the region, if not the most. And frankly, the model for different programs that can be replicated around the region. And it just makes me proud to, to sit on that board, to have the opportunity to, to share programs like the EDST Downtown Streets Team or How Did You Do It? Well, it just so happens that we had a setup that was amenable to, you know, doing some projects like Home Key and Room Key. But PSH, the Permanent Support of Housing Development as well. But, you know, they know there, there's a lot of need and there are a lot of folks that are interested. And I just want to commend staff, Raoul Huerta, who attends these meetings along with me, and folks that really have worked hard over the years to do. me, and folks that really have worked hard over the years to make us, to put us in this position. Thank you. That's all I have.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Early.
Oh, okay. It's going to be very quick. I attended the League of Cities in Long Beach, along with Mayor Guerrero. Very informative. They have wonderful workshops. Some were so popular it couldn't even get in. But it was, it was a great chance to talk with other city councils' members and, and to hear what they had to say. I mean, everything from the smaller communities like Fireball, you know, to very large areas such as, you know, Long Beach, Los Angeles, some of those areas, and how they actually come with, come up with very creative solutions, everything from how they're dealing with affordable housing, homelessness, financing, economic development, to public engagement, you know, and youth programs. So Mayor will give, I'm sure, a much more comprehensive report than I will, but it was, it was very, very good, and I wish you have a council members.
As well?
Yes, yes.
Amendments to the.
Yes, there were amendments to the bylaws which I also voted on because I am one of the delegates there. So for now, that's it. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Early.
Okay, so I had a fairly busy day this week, actually, just back-to-back committee meetings, which are always fun. We had an in-person meeting in Woodland for our Yolo Sub Basin Sustainable Groundwater Agency. It was the first in-person meeting in, I think, two years. It was great to, to be in a room with everyone. We had a couple of things we voted on, in which was a grant procedure for how do we prioritize the proposals that are coming in to the Yolo Sub Basin Sustainable Groundwater Agency, while that is a mouthful. Out of all of the, the grants that were currently submitted, there was something like 17. West Sacramento did not have one of them. I was told that this is because we maybe don't face the same kinds of issues as other cities. Again, I'm a new member of this, and so I'm still learning, but definitely was something that I wanted to talk through with staff. And then right after that, again, back-to-back, was the Yolo Habitat Conservancy meeting. And that one, we had closed session, but voted on things like easements, which was, again, something that I was learning about in order to, again, protect our environment. So it was very, very interesting. Hopefully, once the information that we talked about becomes public, then I can talk through some of those votes that we, that we took. But yeah, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Early.
And Mayor, before you begin, could I just make a correction? It was not a creamery. I made it sound like they're milking cows at the bar.
I was thinking ice cream.
It's a historic Nicolás dairy, so it previously at one point in a lot of time, but now they've just restored it. So that's all I just wanted to.
Okay.
I was, I was like, hmm, ice cream, yeah, I want to go tour. Thank you.
That must have been interesting. Okay, so, yes, Secog Board met, the Transportation Committee and the Board. Transportation Committee met September 1st, and then the Board met 9/15, and kind of like, both took the same action, which is approve the Northern California Mega Region Zero Emission Medium and Heavy Duty Vehicle Study to hire a consultant or a team to identify actions and milestones to implement the electric charging and hydrogen refueling infrastructure needed to support the deployment of medium-duty, heavy-duty, zero-emission vehicles within the Northern California Mega Region. And the reason why that's very important is, is if each jurisdiction is installing their own alternative fueling stations and we're not coordinated, it could be heavily loaded on one versus the other and limits whatever type of vehicles we're purchasing or whatever vehicles they're purchasing without access to what's needed. So I think, you know, hydrogen refueling is important. We have a, a, a plant here that is developing that, as well as, you know, we're going to have other infrastructure that's going to be in demand, since they're building them, they will come, in other words. And next is approve reprogramming funds for the Regional Bike Share Project. Reprogram remaining funds of the Regional Bike Share to a new project focused on planning and implementing the next iteration of bike share and shared micro-mobility in the region. And the reason that, why that's important is because we are a part of the Bike Share Program, and, you know, we're, we're looking at the, the scooters versus the bikes and trying to make sure that we are funding what is in demand and what gets more, better phrase, bang for our buck. Just making sure that what we're, what people are paying for is, you know, covering the cost of the resources that are being, that are out there. We also received news of the next round for our Youth Leadership Academy recruitment. And once the bulletin is out, I don't know if it's out yet, but we can share it to our network. That way we can have more recruitment. So the two that, I think in your, yeah, there was more to this event, I bumped into two youth who were interested, applied and participated, graduated, did some great work. And so you all are out in the community at one point in your Girl Scouts, you know, families. So it's high school youth and just your opportunity to extend. And so once this is out, we'll share it amongst everybody to pass it on to our colleagues.
I went ahead, Mayor, and forwarded to Cheryl Hildreth, the superintendent at Washington Unified, and I believe to Board Member Jackie Wong, too.
Okay, good. And we'll share it to our two-by-two bits available.
Okay.
I know that it's coming up. League of Cities, I'm, I was on the Resolutions Committee appointed by the President, and we did meet and reviewed a ballot measure to strengthen local planning authority. There is a group out there that has been making several attempts to, to put this on the ballot for cities to have local authority. So there were a lot of pros and cons expressed, and this measure, this proposal was defeated. What they wanted to do was partner, require a partnership with the League of Cities for this ballot measure and utilize League of City resources, and normally that's a little premature because the language for this ballot measure was not completed. And it's been, it probably needs to go through our, you know, Housing Community Development Committee, and they are seeking applications for those. By the way, League of Cities is seeking applications in case you want to join another committee. So that is available to you. And at this point, I think that concludes. Oh, I do want to add one more thing on the League of Cities. Sec Valley Division, I did send an email out in the past regarding an opportunity for us to join in a, on Monday evening, baseball. So we're going to the PAC, City PAC is, so it's $30 admission for you to participate, and encouraging my colleagues here, this is River Cats game, and we have a lot of individuals who are sponsoring it, and so it supports, I think, since it's our backyard, just to show our support.
Family-friendly?
Oh, I think, yeah, you can bring a guest. Yeah, I don't know how many family.
Four guests?
I'll pass you the contact information.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. All right, they're going to be in the suites, by the way, so, I don't know.
That sounds fancy.
$30 bucks, I mean, you can't go wrong.
What date is that again?
It's Monday evening.
Okay.
Okay, with that, we'll go next to council appointments, removals, and we have one appointment we need to make, and I'm so sorry, we didn't make this appointment the last time. Oh, Ms. Pedersen is right here.
Oh, hi.
So we have one appointment for the Arts, Culture and Historic Preservation Commission, Ms. Dawn Pedersen. So I'll accept a motion for this appointment.
So moved.
Seconded happily.
All right, Mayor Protem Morosco moved and Councilmember Early seconded. Madam, please call the roll.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Morosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Next is part two, our council calendar. And anybody who's in. Ms. Ariana?
Can't see me, sorry, can't see me. Good evening. There's no items to report tonight.
Okay, thank you. City manager report? Ms. Berlin?
I can reach the button. No report tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. City attorney report?
Nothing to report tonight.
Staff direction is in item D of your, we do have a, an item there for a resolution for Hindu Awareness Month in October. And that was a request I think we all received. So I just, I'm sure it was in here. And then I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded. Right, Protem moved and, Protem Morosco moved and Councilmember Al, Dante, Early seconded. Madam, please call the roll.
One, one second. Madam Mayor, there was an item for future.
Yes, I referenced that.
Did we take a vote on that?
Oh, okay.
Do we need to take a vote?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry.
Unless somebody else wants to make the motion, I can second.
Mayor Protem Morosco moved and.
I can second.
And Councilmember Early seconded. Thank you so much, City Attorney.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Morosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, this is approved. Thank you so much. I guess we don't have any other things we need to do, Mr. City Attorney? Thank you so much for intervening before we shut this down. All right.
All right.
And with that, we, Mayor Protem Morosco moved to adjourn, and that's still on the table, and Councilmember Early seconded.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Morosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
Right, we are adjourned. Good night, everybody.